Welcome to the Town and Monroe Plan Zoning Commission's regular September 1st, 2022 meeting. It is at 7:00 p.m. My name is Michael O'Reilly. I am the chairman. If you would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag. I would like to call the roles starting on my right.
Dominic Smiglino, alternate.
Dominic Panichia, alternate.
Brian Condon, commissioner.
Robert Westlin, commissioner.
Nicole Lebo, alternate.
Rick Schultz, town planner.
Bruce Strad, recording secretary.
Thank you. I think we have to seat an alternate tonight.
Dominic Panichia is up. And do you have a...
His power is shut. Your power. Okay. Give him some time. Okay. For those at home, please mute your microphones while not speaking. During public participation and other participation times, you'll be able to raise your hand for any questions, then you will be acknowledged. And then for anybody here that's interested in public participation, now is the time for general public participation. That is, if any members of the public here tonight have anything that they'd like to bring to the attention of the commission on any issue in town that is not related to items on the agenda tonight, each item on the agenda tonight will have a separate public participation period. So if there's any members of the public here tonight, just make yourselves known. Any members of the public online that would like to participate in general public participation, just raise your hand. If not, then we'll move on to our first public hearing. That is excavation bill 2022-01, file number 108, 909 Main Street. Do we have any additional, there was this continuation from August?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have a 40-day extension authorization letter from the applicant, Mike Porco, and that's dated August 8th, 2022. That extension takes us through September 15th.
Okay. And for the applicant tonight, we have just name and address.
I'm Mike Porco in Sandy Hook, Connecticut.
And John Mack, professional engineer. Please read south of the...
What would you like to do tonight?
I'd like to discuss some stuff, things, go over a few things. Should I talk into the...
Yes.
Okay.
The microphone be fine.
I did get a letter from Scott, the town engineer, and I did reply to him. I went over all his issues and we did get, talked to the Connecticut DOT for the temporary access of the construction vehicles. This is just for an excavation permit. There's not going to be any buildings, no parking lots, it's just rough painting and show silt fence with temporary silt fence, temporary construction access, just to level the site for a building platform and apartment to make the site more presentable for to potential clients. So I just wanted to go over this one issue that came up with the... There was a, like a low area in the front to the right, flat low area that... There's a culvert. The site's located on the west side of Route 25, right near the New Town border. So there's a culvert that goes under 25, that's undersized, like 24 inches, should be like a 60-inch. And it backed up onto the site and there's a low area that has, that retained like some water. But I was out there, I did test those with the health department, mineral health department. It's not, it's not wetland soil. So there's two reports that says it's not wetland soil. So we're standing 100 feet away, we'll stake out that 100-foot limit and we'll be 100 feet away from the wet, from the wetlands. So they're bringing in some material and they're just gonna try to level out. The site right now, it goes down, curriculage away from the state road 25, then it goes back up, so it's kind of hilly right now. We did test those with the health department, I think it was about a year ago, we did that testing. And Mike was out there, so, Mike, you want to say anything?
Oh, we had two soil scientists review the site and tested various spots. One was from Henry Muller, and unfortunately, he passed away, this was back in '07, and found that most of the soils in that area were banking, was banking red. And then the second, since he passed away, we hired another consulting service out of Newtown, JMM, 2017, and he identified the exact same thing, that area which retains all the water because of the back of the culvert, not releasing any of the water off of, from 25, the parking lot from MQ and the property in the back, it just doesn't have enough capacity to handle. We've had the state of Connecticut come by twice to excavate around the pipe and tension pond and relieve some of the pressure, and every time they do that, it relieves all that hydraulic water that's, is retained on property.
So it leaves your side and goes under...
I'm sorry?
The water leaves your side and goes under the road?
Well, the soil is very, is...
Purbius.
Purbius, so it goes into the ground and then whatever pipe, usually, my construction company has cleaned out the pipe a number of times, and what happens is silt fills up half of the pipe, which probably allows 12 inches of water to leave property. So it takes a while for it to dissipate. The state said that they were going to upgrade the pipe, but they didn't have the funds, but that was back in 2018. So...
I do, I do have four sets of revised plans.
Okay, if you can give those to me. So, Mr. Chairman, they want to continue the hearing to September 15th, so staff can review and distribute the revised plans.
Okay, so you'd like to continue?
But, Mr. Chairman, they're just clarifying. Our office has received calls stating, are there more wetlands than what the plans are showing? And they wanted to clarify that it's an undersized culvert that backs up, showing water, standing water, and some people think that's a water body and should be regulated, but it is not. So they just wanted to clarify that for the record.
Okay. So we'll continue the hearing?
Yes, 15th, September 15th.
Okay, with you guys?
Yeah.
All right. We'll see you back.
Thank you.
All right, we have public conference.
Yes. For any members of the public here tonight, I would like to comment on this application. Just last minute here? Nope? Okay. Thank you.
Save our question.
Okay. All right, so we have SCP 2022-04, file number 1444A, 1271 Monroe Turnpike. This is a new application, so we have postings?
Yes. Planning and zoning commission, Monroe, Connecticut, notice public hearing to be held September 1st, 2022. In accordance with CGS 8-7B, public hearing will be held on Thursday, September 10th. Sorry, September 1st, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. We're soon thereafter via hybrid Zoom meeting and in-person attendees will be in the main hall. SCP 2020-08, file number 1644A, 1271 Monroe Turnpike, special exception permit, application for proposed construction of multi-unit age-restricted development at 1271 Monroe Turnpike. Assessor map, 134 Lot 30, 1271 Monroe Turnpike LLC, owner, J. Edwards and Associates LLC representative. Notice was published twice in voices, Wednesday, August 17th, and Wednesday, August 24th.
Thank you. And for the record, Commissioner Ambrosi is in attendance. Rick, you have exhibits?
Mr. Chairman, exhibit one, town engineer comments, dated August 15th, 2022. Exhibit two, health department comments, dated August 17th, 2022. Correction, dated 8/17/2022. Exhibit three, revised plans from Jason Edwards, dated 8/27/2022. Exhibit number four, engineer comments from the town engineer, dated August 30th, 2022. That is all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and thank you for the applicant.
For the record, my name is Larry Edwards, professional engineer, J. Edwards Associates, offices in 227 Stepford Road in Eastman. Before you, back in the spring, I believe, winter or spring, seeking and getting approval for a zone change, working a half acre parcel into the AAR zone, which includes basically public housing, so this particular site. At that time, we presented a schematic plan for you to review, and that plan, we also got approval from the Flatlands Commission prior to coming for the zone change, which showed a multi, a mix of multi-b buildings and single-family buildings, consisting of a total of 26 units that would have been all primarily two-bedroom units. And since then, the property has been put on the market to see if it was of interest once we had that approval. There is now a contract purchaser for the property, a, is Nick in? If I get this wrong, I apologize, Nick, in Noah, he's on the list, that's used here remotely, Elite Builders of Fairview, which is under contract to purchase the property. He has proposed, and through his research and marketing, he feels that the best development option for it is to use single-family detached units, similar to what would be a conventional subdivision. And that's what we have on here, there'll be a total of 19 of those units. They will be, 12 of them will be three-bedroom, and seven would be two-bedroom. And again, I think the market he is trying to go for is, if he is here, he can speak if you have questions for him, but a more active, age-restricted, somebody that's coming out of a large family home that wants, still wants a house, but some places that you can get the maintenance is done by the condo association, homeowners association, but they still have their own house, more than one or two bedrooms, something that they can have a grandchild over. I'm 71 myself, I have grandchildren, almost every week, we have our grandchildren there. The other thing, that's same as I have, I've got basically the same size house, and I have an office. Lots, you're gonna, 55 and over, a lot of those people are gonna continue to work for quite a long time. So that's kind of the market that he is going into here. I think it's a good market, I don't think there's anything else around. There's one over in trouble that is just now being completed, almost the same kind of concepts, single-family condo association, and it's been very successful in terms of the sale of those units. So that's what really we're looking for here. So there's no common areas in terms of amenities or anything like that, it's gonna be basically single-family units, a lot of their own small backyards that they can maintain and keep themselves, but the common grounds and everything will be maintained by the homeowners, by the condo association. The basic layout that you see before you is the same as we had on that original plan. The road comes in, it's a little shorter road, access road that comes in, but the same wetland area crossing, it's the same drainage that you're seeing, it's the same as was on that original plan. That's all been signed off again by Wetlands, because it is a changed application. They signed off on it, their town engineers reviewed it, and we've addressed all his comments. But basically, you're gonna have 19, there'll be four units in the front section, first phase, if you want to say it that way, and then there will be an additional 15 in the back set out and spread it out basically as much as we can, and still maintain the required separation that we have for the buildings and the property values and so forth. The site will have public water, which is a requirement of the zone, and each of the individual units will have its own septic system, and those are shown. We have submitted final drawings to the state, to the local health, they're in the process of submitting that up to the state, because it's, when it's a common over 2,000 gallons, it has to go to the state for their review. But the local has basically signed off of it at this point, and they've sent it up to that. So whatever approvals you would have would be conditional on getting that final approval from the state. We have included a, let's put it video on. These are the construction plans, and we have individual septic systems and plans for each one of the septic systems. And again, it's gonna be very similar to a typical residential subdivision, they're gonna have their own individual system, it'll be built, it will be part of the condo association, it'll be maintained by the overall homeowners and condo association, but it will be individual systems. In our experience, I think that's gonna be a little easier. A lot of the problems you have with these community systems that are septic systems is they get big, they become a maintenance problem in the long run. The one next door that are in the process of fixing theirs, these are gonna be 19, same as you have at your homeowners. If there's something that happens, goes wrong with it, they're gonna be repairing one section of a septic system instead of something that's handling 5,000 or 6,000 gallons. So it's hard to work, and it's very straightforward. We have also included in the application a landscape plan, and go back to that. There's really three components to the landscape plan. There is a certain amount of landscaping that is part of the Wetlands' conditions of approval that they have offer plantings that were being put in along the edge of the Wetlands and limits of the home constructions around the back room. And so we have taken those, included those into the overall landscaping plan. We have also included common area landscaping, driveway trees where we were necessary, some buffer plantings between the units, so that there's some privacy for each of the backyard components, and also screening to the neighboring properties. And then we have a third component, which is the plantings around each individual home. And this again is what I think is gonna be unique about this type of approach to the age-restricted. We're trying to do it that there's some flexibility that the purchasers of the individual houses can do some landscaping around the front of the houses. There's gonna be designated numbers of plants, but they could choose different plants off an approved list. Again, our list is all native species that are approved on the list, but, you know, if they wanted a rose bush here or this, they could do it and make it personal. And I think that's kind of what would make this attractive in terms of sales. And so those three components make up the total landscape plan that you have here before you. There is a sign, it's located in the front, and that'll have landscaping. And again, this is all detailed out in the plans, and it's, and it was prepared and reviewed by, and so that is what makes up the elements of landscape plan and the architectures. Again, these are gonna be individual homes. We're giving some demonstrations here of types and styles of what the builder feels he's gonna do, but again, the homeowner coming in, if he is gonna buy one of the units that hasn't been started yet, just like buying a new home in a subdivision, if he wants to change the styles. We have limits, each of the blocks, if we show as units, we have a dimension on those units, blocks, so as long as they stay within that block, they could change the style of their houses, make them unique, individual to their own case. But this is basically what, what he feels is what he's looking for in terms of design and style. There, again, on the plans, they dictate which ones would be two bedrooms and which ones would be three bedrooms, so obviously, septic systems have to be designed uniquely for those, so that that has to be maintained. But the style also changes. Again, your regulations don't allow any more than three bedrooms, so there would be no more than three bedrooms in the units, which you do allow that, so it would be two and three bedrooms. We have, the staff comments have come back, and we had the initial town engineers' comments, we responded to those, and his final comments were basically everything we were in compliance with. There was a couple items that he indicated could be handled after approval. He needs some of the restoration, restoration bond. Some of it's covered under Wetlands, we thought it was all covered under Wetlands, but he said, no, there's some that has to be covered separately, so, you know, we'll handle that. And the one other item, I think that's probably his biggest comment for us anyway, is he indicated that in accordance with your regulations, we should be looking at putting sidewalks along Route 111. We are requesting a waiver of that requirement. The sidewalks are gonna go nowhere, there's no sidewalks either side, there's no commercial areas that you're gonna gain access to. Basically, everything along this section of Route 111 has been developed to its maximum capacities already with no sidewalk. And so we would request that, that waiver of the commission. Internally, these are individual homes, and it's gonna be very similar to what a residential subdivision would be. We don't see there's any need to put sidewalks in. We will, the road is definitely low traffic count in terms of the number of units here, so we don't feel there's any requirement for, you know, internals sidewalks. It was a comment of the town engineer, which I don't think you put it in the report, but we wanted to investigate connection to their facility next door, and we contacted them, and they do not want any contact, any connection between the two at this point. And to us, it doesn't matter one way or the other, but there's nothing really there that's gonna, isn't like they have a clubhouse to take a deuce or something, there's no real need to have a connection. So we are requesting that. We have a community mailbox, location down at the entrance as you come in off of the road, and we also have a small maintenance building, garage, I think it's 30 by 30 that we have tucked off in the corner, and our landscaping tries to, you know, keep that landscaped away, but, and then we have a series parking next to the mailboxes, and that will be, that will be part of the open space. We did provide parking throughout the site in specific areas, but each, each of the units, it's like a, you're gonna have a two-car garage, and you're gonna have two available spots outside, theoretically, each of the home sites would have four parking spaces, and we provided a number of other additional parking spaces. Each one of the clusters, I think there's three spots in the first section, and we have I think two or three groups of additional parking on the upper level too. So we should have more than enough parking on the site to handle the needs of the, of the units that we're proposing. The health, there was one comment was more testing, which, that was in an early August request. We did the additional testing, and now they've got the plans in their second office in the state, so her comments have been addressed today. And that is basically the extent of the application. You have any questions?
Do you have a rendering of the sign?
No, we do not. We haven't got that for you, so if we have to, we'll come back to the permission through the sign.
Yeah, we usually like to see that. We'll go to the commissioners then, starting on my right. For questions?
Yeah, as far as maintenance, you said the, so the backyards are completely on the owner to maintain?
No, 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 that's all I'm saying, the maintenance is gonna take care of everything. The plantings, if they choose the plantings, it's still gonna be the homeowners association taking care of the outside of the, everything on the outside of the houses. Alls I'm saying is we're trying to do it so they have an area that they can put a table out in the back, or if you've noticed how the houses are positioned, they're all set so that there's a backyard that is kind of isolated. And that's what I'm saying, they have their own area back there, they're not gonna have multi-units that are gonna be going in that same area.
About the roofing siding and all that, is that maintained by the association?
I think that's subject to what the, I don't think that's been decided at this point. Usually, in condos, it is, and I think probably will be in this too. The outside, everything from the outside is part of the condo association, anything inside is the individual's responsibility. And I'm sure that's the same way this property will be.
Thank you.
So is that a private road?
Yes.
Maintained by the association?
Yes.
I don't know, you might have mentioned it, occupancy restriction?
What's that?
Occupants?
It's whatever the, whatever your regulations require.
55.
It's 55, but in terms of the number of occupants, your regulations spell out that you can have, any school-aged person, I think, can live there. I don't, I don't wanna quote your regulations, I don't know them off the top of my head, but it's, it's just what every other age-restricted would be in town. There is specific regulations of which we allow.
And your age restriction is, what age?
55 and over, which is what your regulations are.
Have you set up common charges yet?
No.
Thank you.
Any blasting planned for the property?
No, there shouldn't be any, that's one of the, that's one of the reasons that this, this scheme was chosen over the layout that we had originally with 26 units. With the single-family housing spacing, you don't need to create big level areas for the bigger buildings, which require a significant amount of material to be moved from the top of the hill to the lower part to level everything out. These, they can space and, you know, have walkout basements in some spaces, so we can settle it. So is it, there still could be some blasting up in that upper for those two units, in the far upper corner, that's the only place we found a rock on the spot, was right in that, with the, if you're looking at it, upper left-hand corner. Those two units may still certainly flop, but it's not gonna be a major, it's not gonna be massive removal, it's just gonna be with required probation.
And then, the units are two stories?
Some will be one, two. They aren't gonna be a conventional two-four, two-story colonial, I don't think, but there is gonna be second floors on most... But there is going to be second floors on most of them, again, with, with the three bedroom units, most likely would.
And are pets allowed? Are pets allowed?
Oh, I would imagine they will be, but again, that's going to be probably the homeless association.
All right, just kind of thinking with, you know, the interior, internal sidewalks, just the ability to kind of walk around. The idea right now would be people would be walking basically just kind of in the parking or on the street, basically? And I like the septic being separate. Definitely seems like that would have been a problem on this property to have the bigger septic, so that's nice. We'll see what the state thinks. That's it for now for me, thanks.
You came in front of us last time for us to change that zone. Those were, I think there were going to be two bedrooms, no?
There were, yes, it was going to be 26 that were.
Two bedrooms.
One and two bedrooms, that's correct.
Now you've changed this whole thing to have three bedrooms.
I tried to grab less units.
Less units, but you're increasing to three bedrooms?
Yes.
Which in turn could turn into be school children, right?
Not by your regulations, I don't believe it's allowed, so.
Well, I think only one person has to be a senior to live in that house, right?
No, it's more restrictive. Do you have the regulations with you? I think it's one 18 year old coming in three months out of the year. It's pretty restrictive for people to go in the school from there though.
What I'm saying, when we change that zone to allow that, we're on the, I, I was personally thought that it was the two bedrooms. Now you're coming with application for three bedrooms.
But your regulations allow it for three bedrooms.
Well, he's looking that up, I got another, who's going to maintain the septic system?
That's going to be the homeowners association.
So you're going to give us some kind of agreement that?
That's all, that's all part of the state requirements, I believe, when you set up the condominium association.
Adult, because these are all individuals, that's why I was asking.
They're individuals, but it's still a condo association, it's what's.
All right, and I agree that there should be sidewalks within the unit and across the thing. Like you say, the sidewalks go nowhere, but we've been dealing with that for years, that the sidewalks go nowhere. That's why we don't have sidewalks.
If you think it's necessary on, on 111, then we would.
What I'm saying, 111 and within your condo association should have some kind of walkways instead of walking down a street, no?
But it's no different than every subdivision that we all, all, all of us live in.
No, I understand that. I, I, I'm saying that we've been on putting sidewalks now in this town. And so we're trying to push for sidewalks within the area so people can walk.
I, I would agree with that, if, if there was a, specifically on the state highway.
No, I, I know, but you're close to the others' place there and.
But they have no sidewalks.
No, I understand that, and like as developments go down.
I understand, I mean, that's, that's your pick.
We, yeah, that's what, I mean, we've been dealing with this for years. And now we've decided that we're going to put sidewalks in because everybody says that they go nowhere, but they go nowhere when there's no sidewalks ever put in, so they're never going to.
I, I agree with that. But you're kind of a barn, a cobblestone barn area, I think.
No, I got all that, but no, no, we've been changing some now, we've been.
I, I can see in the commercial areas, that would make sense, and I would agree with that even that. I don't know if that's necessarily the best and extremely rural area, but I get that.
Well, yeah, but there's no even, there's no thing in, interior sidewalks in there at all. You know, like you don't have nothing for people, I mean, some of these associations are starting to put a little bit of sidewalks in there. And we have a couple that we approved already that have sidewalks throughout the whole thing. So I'm saying that, you know, a lot of people like to walk now or, you have to walk, otherwise it could be walking down the street. Like Ryan just said, they have a dog, they want to walk a dog. I don't think they want to be walking down the middle of the street with somebody's coming up to the road, so.
Jason F for the record, they have yards to walk their dogs in here. And not limited to just the street front, you actually.
No, but people like to take a dog, you know, I mean, to walk the dog.
They could walk the whole back of the property too, I mean, there's the.
Right, well, that's, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, definitely, and I understand that.
Did you find the regulation?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Section 3.5, age restricted residents. Paragraph C, there shall be no permanent residents 18 years of age or younger for more than three months in any consecutive 12 month period. Such dwellings shall comply with all state and federal regulations pertaining to housing for persons 55 years and older.
So no school age children, except during the week, summer vacation, I imagine that's what that's in there for.
And Mr. Chairman, regarding sidewalks, staff, because you've been bringing this up for most developments. Staff is working on language that mandates that it's shown on the final plans for, before endorsement. If you care to defer it for a period of time, you could do so. But there will be an agreement in the land records that will require it, require it at the time of the commission's choosing. So there's a couple ways of handling it. Okay, unless you want it built, you know, before the last unit is completed. So there's a couple ways to handle it. We'll talk about that later.
So what, is there, is there a range of square footage when the potential buyer is looking into their unit? Is there a size allowed?
So each of the, if you zoom in on them. What we've done is, because, you know, there are certain requirements in terms of separations and so forth. So we've spelled out the square footage or the 46 by 55 box. So you've got that box to work in and there's a couple that are maybe a little larger and there's something like two bedrooms are a little smaller. So that's the way we try to restrict it because we don't want them to get in our septic systems. So, so that's why, you know, as a design, we've designed that into the.
You know, I feel like this is going to be, I kind of like this approach. I feel like it's going to be lower demand on the septic for the entire parcel than, than the old system, which is good, especially being that it's abutting the wetlands, which I'm a little concerned about. It is what it is, but I mean, when it comes to servicing the, the septic systems, getting them pumped, is there any HOA oversight on that?
We service inspections, and these are for deep plans like Northbrook and those. And there's a scheduled maintenance that we go into and there's companies that do that. And we are subcontracted from a number of, so, yeah, that is, they'll go into a schedule. You know, every so many years they'll pump the tank, they'll do a visual inspection and then they'll get a sign off. And then they, a lot of them will call firms like mine or my son's now and, and schedule that and we do the inspections without.
Are most of these gravity fed systems or are they engineered, they're all gravity? Because, you know, they start blowing out and they start going into the wetlands and nobody realizes that, nobody wants to deal with it, it's expensive. That's why I'm curious whether or not there's going to be oversight, that's happened in that area before.
Yeah.
We know where the sewage goes, we don't, you know, want to keep a lid on that, so to speak. And you mentioned, what list were the, were the plants approved from?
I took the deep manual that they have for native species. I don't have it with me, but there's one that's published. And I went through those and that's what we gave our landscape guide as a list to go through. So that's primarily all, all the plantings. And of course, we went to wetlands, they required us to do that because they were the first ones to get the, the issue to us. So we did it for all the wetlands plantings and we just continued it through for the remaining plants.
I was just concerned what list, you know, everybody's going off of at this point, because there's.
There is, I, I don't have it with me, but, but there is, it's a very, very well listed. You know, they have a lot of different plants and there's, and again, they list them as all the native species.
The internal sidewalks, I think it's probably a good idea. You know, I don't think it's absolutely necessary, but I think it is a good idea for, you know, for the homeowners to have somewhere to go. As far as the waiver on the sidewalks on, on 111, I'm fine with that. That's all I have.
I am looking forward to hearing some of the public's comments, but I have a few questions as well. The basements that are going to be put in, are they going to be finished, are they going to be unfinished?
That will probably be up to the individuals that are buying them. They aren't supposed to be finished, but again, it's, it's no different than if you have a condo. You can't finish it off as a bedroom because that would be a violation of the health code. But if they wanted to put a game room down there, these are going to be pretty big houses as is. I, I would find it hard to believe that they're going to need, but I think what they're going to want that for more than anything is storage. Because that's one of the big things going into a, going from a 3,000 square foot house into a two bedroom condo. If you're like me, getting rid of it, a lot of the stuff just doesn't happen. You know, it's, you want to keep it somewhere, so they end up going to storage, you know, this is where they go.
That makes sense. I, I also know people that live in other condos in town that have used that basement as a bedroom, even though you're not supposed to, so it does happen quite frequently.
It would, yeah.
My concern is the stress on the septic. If we're saying the three bedroom and you have, you know, you could have this point 55 and over, you could have mom and dad in their 90s, you could have their kids who are in their 70s, you could have the grandkids who are in their 30s, you could have the, the 20 year old. So there's a potential to really pack a lot of people in, that's what I'm.
But that's the same as just for every house in a subdivision anywhere in town. The same regulations for these. So in this case, I think that's going to be less of an issue than it is if they were a one bedroom or a two bedroom unit, where all of a sudden they wanted that extra bedroom. If you have a three bedroom house already, that's pretty substantial for somebody that's getting up in age to even maintain for themselves, so.
Is there any lighting, I didn't see any lighting clear.
Oh, there is some lighting, I'm sorry, I didn't know. The primary of the lighting, we have streetlights, again, coming up the street. We have lighting, a front yard light on each of the houses, which will be for the individuals. And, yeah. I don't know what you can see in this plan, but it's.
It's zero over the wetlands.
Yeah, it's zero all over the place, but, but we do spell out pole lamps, there's, there's a style for the pole lamps, colonial style. And then, I would say each, each house will have a pole lamp in the front yard.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to comment on the, the sidewalks and I hope this to come across wrong, but just because we've always done something some way, doesn't mean we keep doing it the same way. I live in a subdivision, every single one of us wishes there were sidewalks. We all have dogs, we all walk our dogs outside of our yard. We all go up and down the street, it's good exercise. I think if community owners want to walk to the mailbox, get some exercise, I think safety is key. And in our winters, I fear people walking in the driveway, it might be wide, like, fair enough. But I think it's safer to maintain sidewalks so they can walk to get their mail, they can walk to visit each other. Even in our own neighborhood, we're always saying we wish we could put in sidewalks now because it's just something our town residents asked for in our last survey and our last P O C D. We know it doesn't go anywhere, like Lina said, yeah, but it could. But I think, I'm with the waiver on 111, but internally, I think to really develop like community feeling and safety, I'd like to see sidewalks.
Okay, just a question. I would, I, I, I would see sidewalks on one side maybe, but I don't see the need for sidewalks on both sides.
One side is, one side's fine, yeah. I have other questions right now.
Any other questions from the commissioners? If not, we'll go to the public. If there are any members of the public here tonight that have any questions or comments, please make yourselves known. And they'll be recognized, just come to the front, just give your name and address for the record.
Yes, I'm Carol Bussi.
And then address us, not the developers.
Okay, I'm Carol Bussi, I live in 75 Highland Drive in Monroe. And I did have a couple of questions coming in here, one of which he did address about the blasting. It seems like whatever, if there is any, it's not going to be too badly, too bad, so I can pass on that. But one of my concerns is the septic reserve. Isn't septic reserve area just required for a septic? So I'd like to know how they're going to have a reserve space, doesn't seem like they will. And also, if I understood Mr. Edlund's correctly, the homeowners association is going to oversee the maintenance of the septic systems. Is that correct? Yes, and so now with each individual house having their own individual septic, for the whole, this isn't your problem, but for the whole association to be overseeing the individual septic when people can abuse their septic by putting grease and all kinds of things into their septic tanks that don't, you know, affect leaching fields and a lot of things. Seems like, are they going to want to bear the cost for their neighbors' abuse of the septic system? So I think that's an issue. And let's see, I guess that's really basically all I have to say on that. The other concern I have about the subdivision is very high density for the amount of random that you have. You know, when you have 14 neighbors, you have quite a bit of wetlands on there that probably, I would say probably reduces it by one third of the buildable area, but I didn't exactly do the numbers, so I'm not sure. And I was wondering also, if you have price point, do you know price point here?
I, I don't, I mean, that's.
That's just out of curiosity.
It's not going to be, if, if you look at the ones, I believe over one, pretty good are now on the market.
Yes, I have.
I would say these are going to be more expensive than that because they're single family. That's one of the draws to doing the single family, it's, you're going to deal with these places.
Market, I do have 39 years experience in this house, I'm real estate, so. Are those any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
There will be reserve areas set aside.
There will be?
Yes.
And where would they exactly be then?
I don't think they're shown on this.
Yeah, they are.
They're shown there, I think I was looking for them.
Can I ask another question or do I have to up there?
Come up here, yes.
Just so they can hear you online?
Well, he's doing that, so you can.
Yeah, while you're talking about the reserves, so in proportion to the size of the original septic and their fields, how big is the reserve area?
Exact same.
So it's just equal, okay. And that's acceptable, and that's acceptable.
Yeah, this is all reviewed by the state health, so. But if you see, each one of the, the other kind of patched is the primary system and the dashed area below it is, is the reserve. And if you, if you look, the reserve areas are wider and shorter. So they're, they're the same size, but they're just a different spast. And as far as, I'm just trying to remember your other comment. The homeowners association is going to be responsible. And I think what you're going to find in a situation where the homeowners association is responsible for the maintenance, that they're also going to be concerned with one of, if one abuses it, then there is going to be a mechanism for that homeowners association to go after that individual because he's abusing what the regulations allow him to do. So I think you're going to find this is going to be more, a better situation than it would be individual homeowners in any of the subdivisions we all live in. Whether they pump them or don't pump them, you know, that can make a big difference over the course of years. A lot of them never repump and then they do fail. And, but this, this will be a maintained schedule. And if the pump guy comes out and pumps it and sees that one is plugged solid, he's going to go back to the homeowners association and make that comment, so.
So can we, about that, I'm sorry. I know, so, you know, I live in High Meadows and we have the community septic system. And of course, a lot of people that moved into Monroe have not lived with septic systems before, so we have no clue about what they're doing and put a lot of things down the septic that shouldn't go into septic, wipes especially, you know, they say flushable, they're not really flushable if you add a septic system. And as a result of that, we've had numerous backups. I mean, like all the time, we have backups because they're getting plugged up, they're not going through, so I don't.
It's our individual system, so.
Yes, I know, but, but, but the association is going to.
Make sure they pump them.
Make sure they pump them and then are you thinking that the comm, the comm charges, the HOAs are going to pay for that?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so see that's for, even though it's not a common system, everybody's going to be responsible for it.
I feel like that's atypical in a, in a build like this.
Yeah, I do too.
For the HOA to pay for the pumping itself.
Yeah, and it's, and to her argument, in the High Meadows, like they have a community system, you don't know which one is, is the bad boy. Whereas in this one, they're going to know as soon as they go out and pump the tank. And you stop doing what you're doing and it's going to be very easy to isolate, so I think in some ways it's better, so.
It looks like your leaching field may not even be on your own property.
Well, it's, it's all owned, it's one.
Right, so.
Yeah, it's not really a subdivision.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Own property.
And that's why they have to be maintained by the homeowners association.
All right, are there any other members of the public? Please come down and name an address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Eric Church, 126 Highland Drive in High Meadows in Monroe. I do have a concern, a question and a concern regarding the blasting, the potential for blasting. Understanding that it's to be determined, and we really won't know until the work begins. Which town entity has the responsibility for signing off on any blasting plan and monitoring that work? Or is that left to the developers? So my question is really more procedural.
I think it's the fire marshal.
Fire marshal.
It's the fire marshal.
Fire marshal.
The only one that controls the blasting.
All right.
In state law, especially.
They'll have regulations and zoning here for blasting.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public here tonight that would like to speak? Come on down. Just take your name and address for the record.
Tom Stain, 1285 Monroe Turnpike. And I was concerned about the buffer zone. I knew it's probably been said before by these years. How much buffer is between my house and property looks for me?
All right, well, let's pull it up. Okay, pull that.
Things have changed. So, anybody got there?
Yes, well, let's open it up and look at it now.
At the bottom.
You're directly to the left.
Well, now, can I see your property and then you get to that?
Right side. You're looking at my property, that's true. The one to the skinny room just below our property, yeah?
If the bottom is Monroe Turnpike, then next door to you.
Yes, okay. 1261.
185.
185. He's right along the backside, right along the whole side of your property there.
Over here.
What kind of screen do you have back there?
Which one is full?
It's to the right.
Right back.
And the house is located.
That's your only question?
Yes, and I also wonder, on the Monroe Turnpike side, how many hours will it be based in Monroe Turnpike tonight? No? And how far will your property store just off of Monroe Turnpike?
I would probably.
How much pull plane up?
Because what will you see from Monroe Turnpike? Probably, is that, what about that maintenance shed?
That's the only thing that we're screening inside of that.
Looks like it's as far back as your backyard.
You need to start about 500 feet back.
I have a feedback, yeah.
So on either side of that kind of driveway is wetlands, so nothing can really get built there. So even in the future, they can't pop like more houses there or anything like that.
As far as how far away.
You've got a setback of what?
So we have a 50-foot setback from the property line. I believe your house, was your question a distance from your home?
Yes, from my driveway.
My driveway.
Well, the driveway is down next to 111, I believe.
Yes.
And there's nothing happening there at all. So.
Here.
Yeah. Yes. So you won't see anything in the driveway. Your house looks like it's about 150 feet maybe from the property line.
Yeah.
And the closest house is going to be behind you and it's going to be 50 feet away from our property. So you're going to be probably 200 feet from your house to the nearest house.
Or there.
You have more than that problem.
Well, okay. Let's really remain oriented.
Yeah, there. And I think we have some buffer planes one back there.
Okay.
We do. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public here tonight that could comment on this application? Are there any members of the public online that would like to comment on this application? I don't see anything. I don't hear anything. Hearing none, we'll go back to the commission. Any last questions on the commissioners for tonight? If not, yeah, one question right here.
On your, so on your septic system I'm looking at, you have some of these piping going underneath the driveways of the road to get to the leaching fields. On number three?
Okay, three. You're correct. And that's, and that one is scheduled to be.
You got three, and you got two.
I think three is the only one because that was spelled out to have the requirement, make that an extra heavy-duty pipe under the road. If you notice, it says it's about, it's being scheduled for a replacement.
I think it's something.
And that was a requirement in the, sorry. I think that's the only one that goes under the driveway.
Okay. That's the only one you have there. We got another one that goes underneath on the backside over here on two, in that little corner.
It goes underneath the turnaround.
Oh, the turnaround for your, yeah, yeah, okay. But that's not a common area. That's just individual turnaround.
It's not going to be relocated.
It's actually relocated. We can move that. Get it out.
That's the only pipe you got underneath it?
I assume so. Because I just said, you know, the health district put that and we wanted us to get it out. There may be another one that goes under the, I think so. Because everything's behind the units. Everything's further than the units. There's one there. The same scenario, we can keep that outside.
So?
I think that's the only ones right there. Yeah. So we can do the same thing there.
So it's the only one you got to put in that's heavy-duty, is that?
I had a question, Rob.
Yep.
Also mentioned about lights, white posts on each driveway.
Yep.
And you might consider sidewalk on one side at least.
Okay. If this is going to be, if we're willing to do this condition, it's not a condition, then that's what we do. So.
Are you going to put any more lights along the way there?
Do you have lights going all the way up?
Yeah, we have all the way up.
Not just on each drive? Are you going to?
No, no, no. What you, on the road, which is the drive, is the septic. Those marks right there.
He just circles with his cross in them if you look at the vision here.
You have to look at the screen.
Yes.
So there are lights coming out.
So there'll be lights all the way up the driveway. Yes. Okay. And then.
Those are post lights.
Yeah, those are post lights.
And then each individual driveway will have a light.
Yeah.
That's what we call some of our light drives. It's confusing. Yeah, yeah, no, lights are, yeah.
Mr. Edwards, do you want to come back with a plan to show us the sidewalks in this, or not?
Be happy with that. That's what, that's what I, yeah, that's what I see.
I'd like to see some kind of a plan because we're pretty much looking for sidewalks. So I think that you should come up with a plan to show the sidewalks within the place and.
I would say that would be a good point for us.
Yeah, I agree with Rob. Maybe I can let the 111 part go, but I'm telling you, on the interior, I want to.
You do have also some people that want to walk on the side.
I disagree with you.
I'm leaving it up to them.
All right. Any other questions from the commissioners?
Is there anything else that anybody, I don't think there's any. On the side, we'll get you.
Side, too.
Side.
Any consideration if there is extensive blasting that needs to be done to drop those two units? Would that be something as opposed to blasting or not?
No.
But you don't, you don't think there's going to be much blasting here?
I don't perceive that there would be.
Did you?
Five feet down.
Yeah, we had spike blade. But it dropped off very quickly. The place is, you see our test hole all the way up to the top.
So you have a calculation of how much you think is going to blast? How much material are you going to have to blast?
In, right?
What's that?
In as opposed to blasting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So that's a way to get the units up without blasting.
Yeah. And, let's put it this way, the developer isn't going to do any more blasting than he has, of course.
No, I know, but I think that if they want to put a full basement in, they're going to.
Generally, in the foundation, if they have soft rock, they'll just hammer it up and not do it with a blast.
So you don't know how much material that you're going to blast out or how much material you think you're going to blast? You don't have any calculation on that?
Unless we go and do borings all over, it's, you know, at this point in the process, we don't.
But you haven't done any borings yet?
No, no.
We've done test holes. That's what I'm saying. So up along the top, right along the top property line, we had ledge.
Okay.
And as you came down over the edge, all the test holes all down here were all seven, eight feet deep. So somewhere, there's going to be a transition in there. But ledge can be, you can do one hole here and you can be down 10 feet and go five feet.
Big potato.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a hard thing to predict.
Okay. All right. Any other questions from the commissioners?
No questions. I just want to thank Carol, Eric and Tom for coming out and expressing your concerns and asking your questions. It's nice to hear from the residents. Thank you, Eric, for coming and asking your questions. I appreciate it. I know we all do. It's nice getting your questions. No questions.
I'll be hearing open.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to direct the advocate to delineate the location of the internal sidewalk. That's an important component.
Sure.
It's easy enough to show. You can see when the sideline is.
Thank you.
And we're going to assign you also.
I'm doing an assign. Thank you, Mr..
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Moving along, we have one subdivision plan. Site development. It's SCP-2017-06A1, 285 Couples Farm Road. Quiet. I noticed this for.
No, no. I thought you wanted me to make a motion. It's quite a jerk. I'll make a motion.
Rick, you got the exhibits.
Oh, yeah, let's go. This is our.
Yeah, this is.
Tell me when. Delivering on this, too.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, exhibit one, town engineers.
Go ahead, Rick.
Exhibit number one, town engineers' report. And exhibit two, inland wetlands approval. That is all.
Thank you. And for the applicant, who's speaking first?
Good evening.
Bill.
Hi, good evening. My name is Bill Holsworth. I'm the director of economic and community development for the town of Monroe. I'm going to kick off the presentation for us tonight. Good evening, Mr. Chair, the commissioners, filing staff and public participants. It's my pleasure to be here this evening and thank you for the honor of re-kicking off the Wolf Park Mall Purpose Field project with Planning and Zoning Commission tonight. Originally approved through this commission on July of 2017, the project has a five-year term of approval, which had been extended through Executive Order 7JJ, paragraph three, the tolling of land use and building permits. Additional two years as it applies to section 19 of Executive Order 7I of the General Statutes of the State of Connecticut, covering COVID-19 and public health emergency and civil preparedness. It is under this prior approval that the town submits this modification application for the Wolf Park Athletic Fields Project. The project, as presented this evening, enjoys the support of the town council, the Office of the First Election, Parks and Recs Commission and Department Head, Department of Economic and Community Development, numerous sports leagues, clubs, associations, teams, coaches, residents, and when anticipated, begins. The rationale for the modification request this evening is to provide an updated plan for the commission to review, incorporating the changes our team has requested based upon the original approval in order to right-size this project, both from a needs and a financial perspective. In June of 18, this project was put out to bid. Proposals came back outlining work to be done that was two to three times our estimates. The increased costs were attributable primarily to stone wall relocations, access path restoration, and additional construction techniques required to accomplish the development of these fields. Our team, led by Messy Oroz, Director of Parks and Recreation, consisting of Rick Schultz, Town Planner, and myself, under the leadership of First Electionman Ken Kellogg, collaborated with our staff and our engineer Dave Saka from TPA, as well as Scott Schatz, line of town engineer, who investigated the prudent and feasible alternatives to reach the goal of building these fields. Much of the original plan has not changed, such as the field locations will remain in the same spots and access to the West Field, affectionately known to us as Access Path Number Two. What has changed is the reduction of field size. West Field was reduced by 27,200 square feet, which is a 24% reduction from the original, originally approved plan. The practice field was reduced by 22,000 square feet, which is a 38% reduction. With those reductions came additional benefits. This resulted in the reduction of stone wall relocation of over 500 linear feet, but also the field construction technique from center crown to a cross-itch field. Removal of the overflow parking lot renovation was also pursued, and that will be pursued as a separate project initiative with a separate budget. Redirection of a permanent improvement to access the practice field has also been included in our new plan. I hope you found this backdrop helpful in understanding where we are with this project. And we humbly hope that you can approve this project tonight and move this project forward for us. With that, I'm going to turn the presentation over to Dave Saka, our engineer from TPA. I thank you for your time.
Where do you share?
Yeah.
Good evening. My name is David Saka. I'm a civil engineer with TPA Design Group at 85 Willow Street in New Haven, Connecticut. I'm just going to briefly walk through the scope changes that are reflected in this submission of plans as outlined by Mr. Holsworth. This is a rendered site plan. As was mentioned, the two key differences are that we've shrunk the fields down somewhat, most noticeably the practice field. The practice field originally was more expansive and it involved the removal and relocation of several existing field stone walls that surrounded the proposed area. That was identified by a lot of the bidders the first time around as a source of cost. The other, another key problem that arose was that we were foreseeing that the existing bituminous pathway up to the tennis courts would be used as a construction access to the practice field. A lot of the bidders had concerns about how much reconstruction work they would be required to do. And so that was reflected in the bids that came in. So I'm just going to get into the more detailed plan here so that I can. What's up? So for example, if we look at the, at the, at the practice field next to the tennis courts, you can see there's existing stone walls to the north, to the east, and to the south of the field. The previously approved plan was much larger and it involved for move or relocation of those walls. It provided a much larger playfield, but the trade-off in cost was quite high. One of the other changes that we've made in order to try and maximize the playable area of the practice field while minimizing its cost is that the original design, it incorporated a center crown field. Essentially, it's high along the north-south axis and it slopes in both directions. The result of that is that, well, that's, you know, it's kind of an addition. It means that you necessarily get less field because you've got to, you've got to cut down. You've got to extend this slope. So this slope comes down farther before you come up and over the crown. So by making this slope from, from east to west, from the tennis court on the high side out toward the wetlands, we get a little bit more playable area, keep the field up a little bit higher, minimize the light usage of water for drainage-related problems because it runoff from the tennis courts and, you know, get the maximum potential field playable area for the most reasonable budget. If we look at the West Field, similarly, we've narrowed it down somewhat, shortened it up somewhat. Essentially, we held this corner. The, because it got a little bit narrower, it also comes up a little bit higher. We have a little bit less cut. In both cases, what we've done with the grading plan is to, as closely as practical, balance the cut and fill on each of these two fields. We are intending that this does not involve moving material in. We are intending that this does not involve moving material in and out, with the exception of material that is required for drainage. We are proposing an underdrain around the side of the West Field that is nearest to the ground. Based on the test bits that we've done some years ago, we anticipate that because this is a very wet, wetland, there's a lot of spring flow, that because we need to cut down a little bit on the high side of the field, there's the possibility of a high groundwater table. Want to intercept that water and get it around the field so that it doesn't affect playability in the long term. Some of the other changes, the previously approved access path is going to be paved with bituminous, going back to the gravel surface, so that that, it softens the appearance, it also reduces the cost. In terms of access for construction of the practice field, what we're proposing is that the contractor will come in past the place gate and instead of, this field, the, the West Field access is also the permanent access. Essentially, they'll construct temporary access. To build the West Field, as they back out, they finish the access path, they will gain access to the practice field simply by coming along the east side of the place gate area and so that we keep the, the construction traffic, maybe a limited portion of the park, essentially from the, essentially from the parking lot along that paved pathway and into one or the other sites. And again, the intent is to balance these. We've got a great deal of high-quality topsoil available on both sides that will be stripped and stopped by the builders. The bulk grading will be done with the material that is given, this script soil to do this. In terms of what's coming in and out, we anticipate, because the underdrain that we're building for the West Field will be bringing in pipes, we're building in crushed stone to form the envelope around the pipe for this, for the underdrain. But really, the equipment's going to mobilize to the site, remain at the site, get the work done, and demobilize from the site. This is not a project that is designed to have trucks coming and going constantly. It is designed to make maximum use of these sources as possible in each of these little pockets to accomplish the, the goal of having high-quality playable fields. This is just a close-up. We do have, did have a meeting with the inland wetlands commission last week and obtained their approval. We made a few minor changes in response to comments from Mr. Schott's line regarding the size of the road particular. So those have been incorporated. I believe that his, all of his other comments. We've been working very closely with Mr. Schott's line to incorporate all of his comments and address all of his concerns at this point. And that's really what we're looking for, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Did you want to say anything? Okay, Commissioner, so start by your left.
All right, I just have a few questions, and I just want to thank you, Missi, for all your hard work and coordinated and abilities. So. So the, the practice field, what sports are going to be able to fit on there?
So, all like the preschool programs, lacrosse, like the little kid that's called fiddlesticks, junior soccer stuff. We can use it for day camp, for special events. We just need more adequate space in the park for all the programming that we have going on.
Okay.
So it's not, I mean, we can also be creative, like, we can have a little flea market there if we wanted to down the road, or, you know, a kids carnival or something where the kids make their own, you know, games. There's so much we can do. I just need more.
Space.
Space that's suitable for programming of Wolf Park.
So the practice field won't be used for the AYSO?
No, they can use it too. It'll be, it'll just be two additional spaces when I have my field users meeting with the presidents of different leagues. So when we have everything laid out, for example, a lot of you already have kids in our programs where you participate, we have a huge men's and women's softball league. But in the spring, between all the baseball and all the softball, with Monroe Little League and Connecticut Seahawks, the men's and women's programs can't start because you all know at Great Hollow Lake, I have three diamonds, but it's also where we play soccer and lacrosse. So the spring is terrible with trying to get everything in. By getting these two fields, some of those sports can move down there, which then leaves the baseball and softball able to have more space for their program.
Okay, so the practice field will still accommodate some of the AYSO kids?
Yep.
Okay, feel the same.
Yep.
I'm going to steal some of this, the practice field. What's the possibility of that being used at night? Because the tennis courts are lit up and we don't have any lit fields in town.
So the tennis courts are only lit on one side, which covers four courts, and they do not face that way at all. They face directly on those four courts.
Okay.
But, but down the road, I would love to get lights at Great Hollow Lake, where the three softball and baseball fields, but that doesn't mean it's just going to be for baseball ensemble. So if there's some coordinating going on, we could, if AYSO wants to host a night game, I already host the freshman and the JV soccer at Massacre as an overflow. So like, maybe we do a JV jamboree at night, you know, it's just something down the road.
Yeah, no, I think that was, my last question is, I know not part of this project, but a really big wish is to light up Great Hollow, because.
That's on my short list of future projects.
Yeah, it'll free up these two, because we can have later practice, the former AYSO, Commissioner, I know this, you know, we can have later practice. It does, okay, next, that is, that's next. Yep, okay. What's between these two fields? Is it totally wetlands? Kids, are kids, they all run between here? Like, if their brother's over here and their sister's over here, are they running between the two fields?
It's, it's a real wet, wetland. It's, it's particularly, if you go out there in the spring, your ankle deep in water.
Okay.
There, you know, there's, we spent a great deal of time over several years looking at how to get in and out of here, both from a regulatory point of view in terms of wetland and also from the practical. And, you know, what we arrived at is coming in through a place that has the least wetland, the least invasive approach to getting across what's, effectively, a couple of little streams in season. You know, there may be options in the future for a more direct connection, but because of the wetland function and because it is a pretty wet wetland, you need to be looking at something substantial, like.
A bridge.
An elevated.
Elevated, yeah.
Timber walkway, something like that, that at this point is not really a feasible approach financially, for just trying to get the fields up and running. And again, the fields have two really different functions. The West Field is, is a competition field. It's where sports will be played, as opposed to the practice field, which is not so much for games. It may be for warm-up, it may be for all of these other activities that Missi's got programmed, but there isn't necessarily some linkage between what's going on and one and the other that drives traffic back and forth, because, you know, family has kids at both places.
That's what I'm thinking, with multiple kids. I have one here, I have one over there, I went to Great Hollow, and I get to see them running towards each other in the woods, but they'll get soaked in the wet, so, okay. Did I hear you say the path going to this, is it gra, is it all gravel?
Yes.
Is it going to be like compacted gravel? I'm thinking of Grandma with the walker on Saturday trying to get to the game. Is she going to be able to get up this path? Is there access for a car to get down there if we had to have somebody brought down there?
The path is designed to be, it's planned to be 12 feet wide.
Okay.
And it is a substantial path. It's designed to be durable and capable of supporting, you know, something like heavy tractors, the, you know, the.
Mowers.
Parks and Rec vehicles, the mowers, but also potentially an emergency.
Ambulance.
Ambulance V-type vehicle. If at some point the Parks and Rec decides that they want to port lose that, this West Field, you can get the truck in and out to service them. So it's designed to be durable. It's going to require some grading. Somebody's going to have to go out there in the spring and just make sure it's bladed smooth. But it is, it's designed to be a durable, relatively smooth surface that someone can can walk in and out uncomfortably.
Strollers. Get pushed, okay, no.
It's like the stone dust that's currently around Great Hollow Lake would be an example.
Okay.
Because we just put some stone dust down a few months ago.
Yeah.
And I, strollers go there and.
Okay.
Chairs and stuff like that.
I was thinking of like chunks of gravel and people just.
No, it's, it'll be pounded down.
Okay.
Not, not big chunky, or stone, but like stone dust.
I love seeing this move forward, so I don't have any other questions. I'm good.
I know you guys. Process act.
That's the process. Stone does to me.
Technical. You guys, you guys worked hard on this and these questions. I don't mean to be picky, you and I just curious, I'm a little late to the party here on what's going on. So.
As far as the, the gravel driveways, are any curbing or anything to kind of retain that grass?
Is there any type of berm or curbing or anything?
No, no.
So it'll just have to be redone every so often?
It's just going to have to be touched up from time to time. You know, it's going to get saturated after a long by the spring. It's going to need to be touched up. I mean, mostly, for the most part, what we're trying to do is, is not build a berm up. We're trying to hold the grade as close as practical to what's there, have it not look invasive like it's, you know, just this thing that's been shut out. The two places that are an exception are obviously the two actual径 crossings, because we have to put pipes in the crossings in order to ensure continuation of flow. We've got to build up a little bit of thickness over the top of that to protect those pipes. So in those two locations, there is a little slope off to either side, but for the most part, it's intended to be a sturdy, well-built roadway that doesn't look too intrusive in the woods.
What type of piping is this, is this?
Ductile.
Okay. And also, was, was, was cost the primary and only driver to the field reduction size?
That was, that was a big one, because we were only allocated, when I took over as Parks and Recreation Director, the project was already in motion, and Scott did help go out to the initial bid, and the previous director, he set aside about $426,000 for this project, and then when we went out to bid, the cheapest, not cheapest would be there, the lowest bid that came back was $852,000, and then the highest was 1.4 million. And it had to do a lot with removing the stone walls and make these gargantuan fields. So one of the first meetings I had when I got here, I met with the presidents of different leagues, and we went over the sizing. I looked up things on CIAC to make sure that, you know, soccer can still happen from kindergarten all the way to 12th grade, and same thing with lacrosse and all that, and everyone was fine with the reduction. So we don't have to remove stone walls, we don't have to repair stone walls, and that was a huge factor in, in the pricing.
Yeah, when I was, you know, you guys were saying removing and relocating these stone walls, I was thinking to myself, do they need to be relocated? You know, I mean.
Yeah.
There is one between the prac. I'm going to scuff, still your question.
Technically, I think.
The practice field, yeah.
That's one of our regulations, that if a stone wall gets.
Yeah. There's the one between the playground. There's the one between the playground and the, and the practice.
And I, and I, I thought the question too, is there, because I know, I know families are going to do this, between the tennis and the practice, we know they're going to go down the side of the tennis field and kind of the wall.
Well, there, there is the opening.
There's an opening?
You know where the wall ball, yeah, the wall ball section is already opening, but with the added of our brand-new playground, we anticipate there's going to be more traffic, especially if there's an activity going on in the practice field, parents will divide a counter. Plus, we're looking to remove some of the trees so that you can see things from the playground. So if you're a parent with a little kid, I get it, I have two, and I'm all over the place, you might be at the swings or something, and you can still watch Johnny at their practice. So, sorry.
What, what, what's, thank you on that. What is, what is the timeline on this? What, about how long will this take, estimated?
Well, assuming approval this evening and that, you know, it'll be out to bid this fall, start next year as the weather is, is permits. The project itself is not that complicated and won't take that long, but they're natural grass fields that really need to grow in for several seasons in order to be as durable as possible in the long run. So the point at which someone is playing on them is not next year. I, I don't.
I was always told when I first came here about two to three growing seasons.
Wow.
And so that's why, and this has been going on before I even came here, and I've been, I'll be here five years, and we really need the space. I mean, we are balls to the wall, excuse my French, that there's just not enough space for everything, that we have to turn away children, or the leagues have to, you know, reconfigure, place stuff away that I'm always at. So I'm trying to keep everyone in Monroe.
Okay, and as far as interruption to the existing fields, there couldn't be much interruption to what's happening now, correct?
No.
No.
No. I mean, there's going to be a few discrete days when construction equipment's coming in, or it's going out, or they're hauling in the crushed stone or something, but it's going to be discrete periods of time and we'll be requiring the contractor to coordinate with the Parks personnel to make sure that the impact is limited.
And we just finished the big playground build, and that was three weeks of coordinating in and out, and there was not any issues, and everyone was very understanding and, I think they knew what was going to happen at the end.
Right. Well, thanks, guys, that's all I have.
Thank you. Just to come back to the, the cost issue, in terms of the practice field, it wasn't so much that making it, making it smaller didn't save, it was a little savings in terms of grading and that, but it was the big factor of eliminating complicating factors that made a big difference. The West Field, I mean, reasonably, we cut it back a little bit. The original plan had been bigger because, you know, the previous director's goal was to make it as large as practical so that it was larger than any of the fields it needed to serve, it needs to serve, to maximize the ability to respray it from year to year, to try and minimize the wear and tear. You know, the, most of the play happens down, up and down the center of the field. If you can shift it a little bit around, you can spread that wear out. We've had to sacrifice that a little bit, but, you know, there may be potential to, to do some more, you know, particularly at the, the south end. If, if the, if field works out well and the town decides it wants a little bit more space, that may be possible in the future.
And as, as far as any type of, you know, seating or bleachers or that kind of thing, is there going to be sufficient room for, for the parents to?
Right, in the beginning, we're probably just breaking on portable bleachers, or you just do the good old fashioned, you bring your soccer chair and you sit around, and then, like he said earlier, eventually we'll put some portable potties out there, but I would love to see it like another small field house with real bathrooms and maybe a concession stand, and then a garage to be with it to keep some of the lawn equipment. So that's like way down the road, so some of that area that may not use for a field can be used for that.
Right. The other thing I would say is that in both cases, there's a slope on the uphill side, you know, like a three-to-one slope, so there's a lot of place for, for people to spread out and have a look. Yes. Informal bleachers.
Okay, Commissioner, I'm Rosie.
So basically, the path is going to be a walking path, right? Do you have any signage that you're going to put on the bottom there that states that for emergency vehicles and maintenance vehicles only?
Well, it would, it would just, oh, sorry.
Sure.
So as far as signage, it'll be just like the signage we have all over the park. If there's an area that's closed to traffic or do not enter, I would just collaborate with Public Works to get the signs that I need to be made.
Right, tell somebody driving up there, like.
They'd have to go down.
Well, they have to.
Basketball court.
Yes, yeah, you have, you, yeah.
Drive down that, I did it the other day.
Yeah, but I mean, there's certain times, I mean, we do let people drive down when they're unloading for their picnics. You've all been to our summer concert series, I'm sure, at one point, and the band parks behind it, but again, we have staff that help guide them. You know, we, we discuss at first, it's not going to be an open thoroughway to just come and go as you please.
Wasn't there going to be a? There's a removal.
Yeah, down there, there's the baller. But he's talking about, we're not going to put the baller at the beginning of the basketball court area, but down further.
It'll be everywhere the new path starts.
Right. Just like we have on the Rails to Trails line, like if you come in through docks, there's no.
Are utilities marked there?
Nope.
But, you know, I don't know, in there.
We're putting.
Well, yes, yes.
Two sleeves.
Sleeves.
Install underneath the trail to accommodate, you know, potentially a water surface for future irrigation or.
Whole field.
Surface for a scoreboard or something.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, that you do that now. I mean, I was going to show it on the plan here, but.
Should be on your plan.
Should be on the plan.
It is on the plan. It's on the plan. It's underneath the pathways. It should be denoted there by two six-inch.
There's two 12-inch, no, those are the storm pipes. Where is it? Install two empty six-inch conduits to accommodate future.
Yeah, I got it, yeah. Okay. That's all I have.
That's one issue.
Crazy that you want.
I know, yeah.
Thank you.
What's the, what's the access going to be?
What's the, what's the access gonna be to the practice field?
There's, there's not gonna be a formal path built immediately. The idea is, it's a new thing, it's a new use, kind of let people figure out how they wanna get there. You can get there, maybe tennis courts and the handball wall, you can walk up to the hill from the place gate, there's a lot of ways that you can get there, and once it starts to get used and people figure out how they wanna get there, what seems to be the most common, then the Parks and Rec Department can, you know, do that, some stone dust, do something more permanent if there are terrorists dictating that that's appropriate in certain locations. We're just trying not to
Think about it.
Take a wild guess of what's going to be used, rather than, you know, let people tell us what's gonna be used anyway. Thanks.
Well, thank you, I think you did a real pleasant job, and most of my questions have been answered, so I have no more questions.
Same here, yeah, most of the questions already answered, definitely need to build, I think it's great, agree, and definitely need those lights at Great Hollow down the line.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Will the practice field be marked?
What do you mean by marked?
Labeled, will there be a sign that, you know, it's there?
Oh, sure, because we have signs up at Great Hollow, you know, we'll just keep it aesthetic to match, kind of stuff.
All right, good. Any other questions? Right then, if not, then we'll close here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we'll go on to deliberations.
I don't think it's open.
That's second. So you have in front of you, Commissioners, a draft approval.
I'll make a motion to approve that's been due 27th January 06, 21, 5189A, 285 Farm Road. A draft.
Okay, I have a motion
Second.
Motion second. Is there any further discussion? It's not, we'll hold the roll, starting on my left.
Westland, yes.
Riley, yes.
Rosie, yes.
Condon, yes.
Adam McNeese.
Motion passes. We have one thing that we have to vote on, it's a bond release, we have to add it to the, no, we have to add it to the agenda. Do we have it here? Do I have it, Stephanie?
I don't, the only one who has it, do you?
All right, so we'll have a motion to add bond release to 178 Main Street, Monroe Car Wash, the agenda. Motion and a second, so we will now discuss. I have a request for a bond release of the amount of $25,000 to the Monroe Car Wash. Staff has inspected 178 Main Street, the Monroe Car Wash, and recommends the release of the $25,000 site on, as all improvements have been completed in accordance with the approved site plan. So I'll entertain a motion to release the bond.
I'll make a motion to release the bond.
And a second?
Second for me.
Motion and a second? Any discussion, any questions?
No.
If not, we'll hold the roll, again, starting, am I right?
N H, yes.
Condon, yes.
And Rosie, yes.
Riley, yes.
Westland, yes.
Okay. That concludes the main presentation for the night. We have two new applications listed here, I think you do have a, in your one packet, one, the other one, I think we got last, we got that mailed to us or in the last meeting? I think I have something at home in regards to the outdoor storage, 754 Main Street. I think that's in your packet at home.
Think so?
You, you, we, you picked up on Monday at the zoning regulation
Yeah.
Supplement.
I was there.
All right, that was the packet there, it was part of that.
Yeah, so check your packages, all right?
That's for next
Yeah. And down the road, the hearing is in October.
Oh, or Stone Farm.
Yeah.
I have that, yeah, I have that.
We have no minute meetings tonight, no correspondents, I have no chairman's report. Do we have any commissioners' reports? Do we have any staff reports?
Mr. Chairman, just to highlight the zoning regulation subcommittee, on this past Monday, August 29th, the committee directed staff to formulate regulations on the following: accessory dwelling units in the RF3 allowing detached accessory dwelling units, dog daycare facilities in the commercial and industrial zones by SCP, and electric vehicle charging stations, site development plan. Just to clarify, on town property, it's as of right, it is currently recognized as such, but for commercial and industrial areas, a site development plan will be required.
Thank you.
That is all.
Then we'll share an inten, a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second for me, Rosie.
All right, we are hereby adjourned, it is 8:30.